Well, good morning everybody and welcome to planning meeting here, part one. We've only got one item on this this morning now. We'll start, there's spare minutes and papers at the back of the room. If anyone's got any. Some house rules and guidance. Toilets on the ground floor and there is a toilet for this facility on the floor, just around the corner on the right here. There's machines outside, you've probably seen. There's no fire alarms planned today. So in the event of alarms going off, please follow instructions from our council staff, which will guide you down the stairs out onto Peace Hill. I can remind everyone to silence their phones. And when using the microphone, if you can get really close to it so we can hear you. And if anyone at the back can't hear, please put your hand up or alert us so we can do something about it. So, I'll go to the agendas now. Apologies. I know we've got one from councillor Torfroth. The only other apology will be from me that I will have to leave for part of the second. Eighteen, twelve thirty. Demonstrations of interest.
I'm delighted to talk to you this afternoon.
Where you've been doing it, probably at the time. If it counts smart.
This afternoon, yeah.
This afternoon.
Yeah.
You can get that then, it would probably be better. But if you're thinking of this as an occasion. Have we got minutes for this now, haven't we? No, it's sorry. So then we go straight to the first item. Item five's in council, item six. And before we start, start with the public speakers, we've got three, I think, objections. Mr Cahain, Cahain, Mr Elias and Mr Taylor. You have a minute, three minutes of a minute each. And we've agreed that our officer here will ring the bell when your first minute's up and then the second minute. If you'd like to come to them, get yourself ready to come to them. Mr Cahain. Okay. And also we've got Mr Sutton, the agent, if you'd like to come to the table. You have three minutes to speak. But before we get to that with the officer, the council officer.
Hey, thank you Chair. This site is located within Eastfield and consists of twenty-six two-storey housing association properties that are arranged around two separate cul-de-sacs and next to a footpath and cycling link to Warren Road. Site is joined by two storey dwellings, Eastfield, Warren Road, Chesterfield Road, Shirley Grove, Green End Rings, and also by Chesterfield Primary School. The application proposes to demolish the houses into erect fifteen new dwellings on site, all which would be affordable. This is phases one and two of proposals, buy hundred houses to redevelop Eastfields. Phase three is a subject with separate application that is currently scheduled to be determined under delegated powers. And that proposes to erect twelve houses in place of existing eight. The development consists of a range of footbathing types, including two-storey houses, bungalows and flats, and associated cycling bin stores, parking, landscape and open space. These would be accessed via a single cul-de-sac and the highway would be reconfigured near to the link to Warren Road. And objections were originally received from the urban sign and landscape officers, as well as from a number of local residents, notably those of twenty-two and twenty-four Evergreens. This has resulted in the scheme being amended essentially to remove parking courts that were previously proposed in the central corners of the site, with these now being replaced with dog park and flat sofa garages. Most of the consultees feel the scheme is amended as acceptable, so the proposed additions. There are however some outstanding technical objections. The affordable housing team has raised some concern that the mix of dwellings proposed doesn't align with the affordable housing SPD. This is addressed in the report. As I said, if I feel these, as this is for a hundred percent affordable housing, I feel the standards should reasonably be applied to the same scheme rather than the required development. And the housing association has also clarified that the housing mix has been designed to accommodate existing residents to be located in the new properties, taking account of their challenging needs. And on this basis, I feel the proposals accepted them on this basis. Cycling and walking officers also raise concerns about the application. They feel that the cycling pedestrian in the thirty-one road should be wider to three and a half metres. And a number of the residents who use this link have also raised similar concerns, which have been assessed in the report. In summary, I feel the scale of the proposed development, which is twenty-four additional dwellings on this site and four in phase three, is not sufficient enough to justify improvements to this route. Revised highways layout has been drawn up following significant pre-application discussions with the highways authority, who particularly wanted to secure modification to the existing layout here to try and slow vehicle speeds down. And they have expressed support for the scheme that's been submitted. There has also been an objection to the scheme on the basis that there's no footpath link to the adjacent primary school. Now, the applicant agent has clarified that the scheme is overgrown and hasn't been used for some time. And also that the school didn't want, wished to see it reopened and preferring to attain a single access point to the front. That providing this link would mean that the number of dwellings would have been reduced, which a viability report has been submitted separately to the application. Arguing that the scheme on viability needed to reduce the number of properties. I would also say, and I'll show a map of this later, that the school is located just forty miles or six minutes walk from the site, going on Eastfield, the men along Ashfield Road and Green End Road. So given that it's close anyway, it can be accessed via footpaths and safety, I don't feel that we can justify the provision of any of this part of this scheme. The site is surrounded by dwellings, the number of residents objected to the proposal. On the whole, the new houses have been signed nine to ten meters deep from their gardens. Lots of short gardens, wide bungalows, all looked towards the bottom of Nathan Gardens. So I'm happy this wouldn't advise to overlooking the shadow issues. The main concerns about the limiting impact have been raised by seven and eight Shirley Grove, twenty-two and twenty-four Evergreens and fifty-three Chesterfield Road. The properties in Evergreens are beyond the southern corner of the site. These residents raised objections to the original scheme, which proposed a parking court directly next to their properties, and have confirmed that the amended plans have largely resolved their concerns. They do have outstanding concerns that the amendment has resulted in the building coming closer to their boundaries. They just wanted the insurance that that would not rise to a significant overbearing issue. And they've also raised some concern about badly at the front of this plot and the potential for overlooking. I think the properties are far enough away from those Evergreens to avoid any significant loss of light or outlook. So I do feel that badly has the potential to look directly into their gardens. So I have recommended the addition to require the site that badly to be fitted with solid scheme. Number eight Shirley Grove, there's also raised concerns on a number of grounds, mainly overlooking, overbearing, loss of light and noise disturbance. And the dwellings on this eastern part of the site would be closer than the existing houses, but they would still be nineteen to twenty metres away from the rear Nathan houses. And this eastern side feels sufficient to prevent a significant and harmful overlooking or overshadowing in fact. Although I do accept that the impact would be greater than what exists at present. The owner of number seven Shirley Grove requested change to the internal layout to minimize the perception of being overlooked. And the amended plan has been submitted that addresses this request. Number fifty-three Chesterfield Road, which lies beyond the northeastern boundary of the site, raised concerns regarding the revised layout, which results in plots fourteen and sixteen and a flat by the gouge, which refers to their property. This doesn't arise to any part of this site or overlooking issues. In response to their concerns, the agent has amended the plan to reposition bin stores in the rear gardens and also to erect one point eight metre high wall along the boundary between plots fourteen and sixteen and where the property lies on number three, in order to provide a great sense of security and privacy to these neighbours. The report notes that a separate confidential viability report has been submitted with the application, arguing that any reduction in the number of dwellings or requirement of infrastructure contributions could make the scheme unviable the result of a need to substitute market dwellings for affordable ones. And in terms of setting infrastructure contributions, there are two areas of open space nearby where contributions could potentially be directed, these are on Scotland Road and Green End Road. The former is already having the scheme of improvements carried out. And the latter, according to a research study carried out, is quite well provided for. And I think taking those factors into account, the viability information provided by the agent, and also the fact that the proposal does include an area of open space that could be used by existing proposed residents, my recommendation is that we proceed without complying with contributions in this instance. So the recommendation is to approve subject to the section on the sixth green, would first be being indicated, secure affordable housing across the site, and to the conditions that have been set out in the report and the amendment sheet. I'm waiting for the nature conservation officer to provide detailed wording of the particular condition. The agent was also yesterday called between heavy-bearded traffic plan, which has been recommended by the waste team. And I therefore ask for delegated powers to resolve these issues and to apply any recommended conditions that are recommended by those officers. And I'll just run you through the plans. Well, this shows the... The site here has been outlined in red. A list shows the existing arrangement of houses around the two cul-de-sacs. Etched in blue on the opposite side of Eastfield is a site that's subject to the phase three application. And you can see that the site is surrounded by houses. In the south, next to the southeast corner is Chesterfield Primary School. This shows the proposed layout, this is the very latest amendment and does differ very slightly from the plans that were included in the drawing pack. You can see the, or the main access coming in off Eastfield and near to the link through to Warren Road, which is proposed to be retained as part of this application. It then ends in a single cul-de-sac, where there is an area of property open space at the end, and a further footpath and cycling link provided on to Eastfield towards the southern end of the site. The amendments included, given this scheme, are the addition of this small section of all next to number fifty-three Chesterfield. And also a small reconfiguration to the garden area of plots forty-three and forty-four to address some minor outstanding concerns of the urban sign officer. I'll just run through the plots, this is going back to the plan, essentially going from bottom left and then actually going around the cul-de-sac. So the first three plots are bungalows. And then on the other side of the footpath link through to Warren Road are two-storey houses. Then the majority of the remainder of the houses are two-storey and consist of a mixture of brick or brick and mender finishes. So this shows the elevations near to number fifty-three Chesterfield and also properties in seven and eight Shirley Grove. With that in mind, plots twenty to twenty-six also about the garden areas of properties in Shirley Grove. And this shows how they sort of step down to the carports between the dwellings. Again, this is just coming round to, this includes plots thirty-one and thirty-two, which are the residents of Evergreens, where there's some concerns about in number three, I mentioned earlier. And this is coming round sort of the right-hand side of the site as we were looking at it. And then lastly, I just want to show you, this is an extract from Google Maps showing the walking route to the school and picking up on the issue of the lack of a footpath link through from the site itself. This has taken a starting point of number forty-six Eastfield, which is next to the link through to Warren Road. And shows the walking route going down Eastfield, then Ashfield Road, then on to Green End Road and up into the primary schools, being a forty mile route taking six minutes. Okay, thank you.
The three objectives, I don't know which one you want to go to, I'll leave you after.
Hi, I'm Angela, this is on the number eight Shirley Grove. My biggest concern is the number of plots which are going to be, but eight Shirley Grove. And also the six plots directly nineteen to twenty-four, that is two-storey dwellings. If you look overlooking the entire length of the garden, which is around fifty-two metres, it translates into twelve top-storey windows overlooking the length of the property. And essentially being in the garden, it's going to be like being in a fishbowl and being, seem like being under constant surveillance. So I know some changes have been made, I'm similar concerned that number seven Shirley Grove had a layout of the top floor change. And something similar could be done with these properties here, so that the bathrooms are facing the back and have an obscure glass in there. So the perception of being overlooked is reduced with these top-storey windows overlooking the garden. The other concern is, this is effectively a continual structure of build with a carport in between. And the carport has been for around...
I'm Richard Taylor of Milton Road. Now, the council's got some very strong policies for preserving and enhancing cycling and walking routes in the city. I come today to urge you to follow these policies when you make the decision. What we currently got on the connection between Eastfield and Warren Road is a clearly marked, signed, shared use, cycle and pedestrian footway. And I'm not convinced that the plans that are before you will preserve that and they certainly won't enhance it. What is proposed includes two ninety-degree corners. You've heard from your officer that they think that this will slow traffic, including cyclists. I don't think that is appropriate. I think there is an opportunity to here to have a straight and safe cycling route through from Warren Road down Eastfield, connecting built above the science park with, for example, the low-traffic cycling routes along Riverside. I would be making these points even if this was a single plot. I don't think the comments about this not being large enough development to warrant improving cycling routes.
Sorry, the bell doesn't mean that they've got to stop talking as the previous speaker.
The bell is just an indication of your time.
Word speakers told that.
Yeah, I said we've got three minutes between them, I just did a cut, I had a word with speakers for this.
My name is Peter Cahain on the occupier of fifty-three Chesterfield Road. A lot of our concerns have been addressed by the planning council, which I thank you. We would just really appreciate a lot more detail on both the wall and the fencing, which is going to surround our property. Arguably, our property is the closest to this new footpath and the buildings themselves. When we bought the house, it was, we bought the house in a cul-de-sac and you could really argue now it is now on the cul-de-sac, we've got a public way that are ready behind our bathroom, children's room and kitchen. So we really would urge you to give some real detail on the wall and the fencing down the side by house.
And the cycling campaign, the local county councillor and many residents and your own cycling and walking officer have expressed concern about the impact on cycling routes.
Thank you for that. Now we have the Mr Sutton.
Thank you Chair. Hundred Houses Society is a council housing association with just over a thousand properties under their ownership and management in Cambridge and the surrounding area. As well as working with local authorities, parish councils, developers, landowners, funders and individuals, the society has a close working relationship with our senior colleagues, who are their development arm, who would be responsible for delivering the proposed new project of homes in Eastfield. These proposals have been developed over the last two years and represent an opportunity to secure a significant number of affordable rented dwellings in the city. Probably the last, given the government's new focus on first-time buyer housing. The applicants have held several pre-application meetings with officers and their input and advice has in full form shaped the scheme we see before you today. The most recent minor revisions to the proposals, as explained by the planning officer, are sought to address neighbours' concerns about loss of amenity. And all other technical requirements have now been met, although obviously I do accept the comments about the cycle footpath, which has been preserved and is a three-metre footpath, as shown on the plans. As you're aware, the existing housing is, a number of those houses are in poor state compared to their current location. They have very large gardens and the benefits of this scheme are quite enormous. A number of the existing residents would be relocated and the funding is very tight, both in terms of the grant and the ability to rehouse local residents and also provide some shared equity housing, which is helping to cross subsidize the whole scheme. So viability is a key issue, as explained in the officer's report. I just hope that you can see fit to support the officer's recommendation and agree with the proposals, thank you.
There's only one point I feel I need to come back on in terms of the issues that have been raised because I think everything's already been assessed in the, in the report and in my presentation today. But it's just really in terms of the comment made by number fifty-three Chesterfield Road in terms of the details of the boundary, is that reserve the amended condition requiring details of the boundary treatments to be provided before development starts, for those to be erected and retained on site then after. So through that condition, you'd be looking to get full details of what's proposed to all boundaries.
Thank you, now I've got two members.
Thank you Chair, yes, I'm pretty concerned about the question of permeability for walkers and pedestrians. I think I'm not pleased with the changes that's been made. I'd like to see a map showing the present, future and past ones. I'd like to see this so-called overgrown path and any other aspects of the pedestrian and cycle movement in this area. Vince.
Okay, I'll just go back to the site location plan here. The existing benches are shown firstly three to Warren Road, which is towards the left-hand side of the office office point. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so there's the link through to Warren Road here, which is the footpath and cycling link. This is where the proposal involves the reconfiguration of the highway layout. This shows the link through to the back of the primary school. And then the map that I showed you from Google Maps showing the sort of alternative route to the primary school. Sort of continues from the site, so this is the Warren Road link. So it continues down Eastfield and Ashfield Road, along Green End Road and then up into the, into the primary school grounds and the front, back of the building. And there's a footpath the whole way through here, so I'm satisfied that there is a safe means of pedestrian access to the school. And it's not a long distance away, I believe it's very much walkable distance.
Can you come back? Yes. I'm not sure I agree with that analysis because Green End Road is a very busy road for a start. And it seems to me the distance around three sides of the square is really substantial. The school's objection to having two potential accesses seems to me not helped by other schools. Milton Road Primary School has a double access and other schools with similar double access. So I don't think the school's objection should be the overriding factor. I think people's convenience and permeability is, I think, extremely important. And we should be making efforts, and I fully support the walking and cycling officers' objections to the proposed layout. It seems to be what we've got there falls down on a number of counts.
I've got three questions. First of all, what is the status of the SPD on affordable housing? Because it's, there's no question that it's being cast aside in terms of the bed mix and so on that is normally required for affordable housing. So I just want to know, I'd just like a restatement of why we have an SPD. If perhaps in explaining that, it'd be good to hear the account has been taken of the housing needs of those on the registers. So I, you know, I'd like to think that the SPD is not some sort of remote document that has come from outer space. It is a document that addresses itself very specifically to the needs of those who find it very, very hard to occupy normal accommodation. So the second thing is, I'm not quite clear as to whether the present housing on the site is occupied or not. A great deal has been made of the bed mix, which is being proposed being a response to the needs of the existing residents, which is, I think, a specious argument and one that we shouldn't accept on a planning committee because we don't make reference to present occupants and their needs as being an object of planning policy. We're, we're thinking about buildings and general need and future need rather than giving special consideration to present residents. So I'd like to know a bit more about how many of the dwellings are currently occupied. And I have to say that I think Richard Taylor's intervention is a useful one because as I see it, the mix of cycling, of cyclists and pedestrians, particularly children going to and from school, and presumably some of them being unaccompanied, with two abrupt ninety per cent corners, seems to me to be not a very sensible, safe solution to the mix of cyclists and pedestrians. mix of cyclists and pedestrians. I'd like further comment on that.
Can I start?
Okay. First on the general point, Council of Hipkins, you say, I, I think, um, the hundred houses need to be commended for seeking to, um, I was going to say revamp, that's not really quite the right word, um, to, um, improve their estate in the present political climate of what's happening with the, with the social housing. And I very much welcome, uh, the increase in so, in housing, social rents that's being proposed. Um, I, I note Council of Hipkins' comments on the SPD, but I think that, um, where you've got a present landlord who is, um, who is attempting to both, uh, rebuild and stay, get more on to it and look after their tenants. That sounds to me, it may or may not be good in planning terms, but it does sound to me to be good in overall terms for the city. Uh, so that was my first thought. The second thing I wanted to do was to pick up on what Councilor Tullit was saying about the path to the school. I also find it, um, strange that the school finds it impossible to deal with two entries. Um, I also know a school which has got two entries and presumably, uh, the school would be, uh, fully entitled to have a gate where the path enters their premises, which could be shut when, when, certainly overnight. Um, and possibly in part during the day when, once children have come, then shut the gate and then open it for them to go. Uh, it does seem to me to be perfectly, perfectly possible to, um, have children off those main roads and I would, Councilor Tullit, on saying, you know, very small children just learning to cycle along a path, sharing, probably sharing the pathway with other children going to school is not really something we should be promoting. And to have a path, even if it is a mixed path for cyclists and pedestrians, which at least isn't complicated with motorised traffic, does sound to me to be the better option. And as I said, I think the school could, um, find ways of controlling, um, undesirable access, um, during the times, what, certainly overnight and possibly during the day, should they feel, tell me today. And if it doesn't work, then again, they could just close it.
Just saying, I know new school being built around there and it had one access, I think for security reasons, if you look at what's been happening there over the, a lot of new schools being built. I know the schools only like, have one access for the security reasons.
I know, but there are plenty that have two.
There are old schools which were built for security.
Yes. I, I just wonder how far we've, we've gone with this security thing, whether we don't sometimes go over the top. Uh, and there are ways of doing it, which keeps the security, but also keeps the convenience and also keeps the possibility of, of young children getting into the habit of cycling to school, um, safely. And if they don't, if they don't start young, they won't do it at all.
We, we, we have been listening to what the schools want on this place. Can I start?
Well, drawing my, my twenty-one years' experience as a school governor, um, I can, I can respect Chesterton Primary School's, um, viewpoint that having, uh, uh, an entrance, uh, on a remote area of the school, as in the other side of the playing field, might cause an issue. Because of course, they, they, okay, I take the point that it could be locked at night, but of course, with, with the world that we live in, unfortunately, um, the way, the way the world is today, schools have to be very careful with security. And all, all gates are locked and secure, uh, fencing, um, is around the schools. Uh, lots of children are at the school and, and till, and they, and they go home at noon. And the children are not allowed out at lunchtime unless they are escorted, uh, picked up by a recognised parent. That's the world we live in. Sad world it is. But, so I can fully respect why Chesterton Primary School, um, would be reluctant to, um, uh, you know, having that access there. And the other, another point is, unfortunately, given they, they did, uh, somebody to man, man the gate and do the security. What happens next is, um, other parents who, um, try to take the children to school by car would then see this as another option for getting that much, that much closer to the school, um, to drop the children off. And then very, very, very soon, Eastfield would be, become, have, uh, you know, uh, would become this sort of one that across, perhaps across the city where there's a congestion of cars, uh, cer- certain times in the morning or certain times at night, because you know, because that's, unfortunately, that's the way of the world. Parents don't feel, um, don't feel it's a safe environment. Children to walk to school around anymore. And, you know, and that's where we are. So I fully respect Chesterton Primary School's viewpoint. Actually, I think, straight ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad you picked a point up about the car because we've got problems other areas where you have areas of schools where it's state. People will park on this, on this estate, it could be a car park, they'll drop the kids off at school. Can I start playing with that?
Just to start from a, um, a general point, echo Councilor Smart's, um, initial comments about, um, this scheme being obviously a hundred percent affordable housing in the present, uh, political climate, that's, uh, to be commended. And, and obviously in our housing policies within the level of plan, that's to be, um, given a lot of weight and a lot of, uh, um, merit accordingly. Uh, in terms of the design, clearly, everybody has a view on, uh, this design and other designs. And we all think one or two things could be done a little bit better, could be done differently. And that is clearly, um, often, uh, the subject of discussion at this duty. But we have to judge what's here in front of us, uh, now with the evidence behind it from the report and the public file documents. In terms of, um, the, the general design, yes, um, uh, there is a, uh, an issue on terms of the balance of the mix of the, uh, the housing that the report in the text actually, we can only apply that SPD to the forty percent that we would normally require rather than the full hundred percent. That's a, you know, an interesting sort of slant, but clearly, strictly speaking, yes, we can only apply that to forty percent that we would have, uh, demanded from the scheme. They have clearly tried to accommodate those who, those tenants who wish to return to, um, Eastfields and they have been obviously accommodated in terms of their requirements, um, a- accordingly. Clearly, there's a, a big uplift in the number of housing units, which again is to commend. And that's, that's, in my, in my opinion, again, to be given, uh, a great deal of, uh, weight in the present, um, uh, policy sort of context. In terms of some of the issues that have been raised, uh, clearly, um, the, the overgrown path at the rear, uh, sorry, to the rear of the school is not accepted by the school as an access. Therefore, you could, in theory, design a scheme that has a, uh, a pathway to the rear of the school. But actually, if the school only use it, then you're wasting your time and money. Uh, and actually, you're, you're actually producing a footprint of the housing that's in that, uh, gap, uh, as part of this design. So I suggest, uh, that's not exactly the, um, the best use of this, um, uh, plan. Uh, again, as a school governor, I know for well, there are long discussions as school governors these days about safeguarding and, uh, and security. And I respect the fact that the school says, um, they have said, um, that they don't wish to entertain a rear access. And we're not talking about dual access, we're talking about a rear access, which is a bit different in terms of how you secure a school site. Uh, and clearly, um, we have to accept that view. Yes, it may be a current view, but my guess is, you know, that's, um, a prevalent view and, um, and used to be respected. So, uh, since it's overgrown at the moment, probably hardly ever used because you don't get into school from it. Um, I don't see that as a, a major, uh, problem. In terms of, um, the, the cycle link or pedestrian stroke cycle link, uh, Warren Road, clearly, uh, there's a, a change in the configuration, how this relates to this development. Um, yes, in an ideal world and ideal design, you have a sway through, uh, cycle and, uh, uh, bathroom link through. Uh, this does have a, uh, a turn, uh, along it. Um, that's, again, that's not unknown within the city. We have lots of, but rules and then suddenly turn and, and kink and, and whatever. Yes, it's not ideal for a cyclist, but actually, in terms of the design, it's done to actually make that entrance point to the development, uh, the main part of the development to boot, uh, into, you know, into a better, safer environment for all concerned. Uh, and I think I, again, respect that, uh, in terms of the design, uh, treatment. Uh, yes, you may slow down a few cycles, but actually, that's because there's lots of other conflicts of, uh, of movements at that point. So that's to be, um, accepted. Um, uh, and in terms, in terms of, um, uh, I think the overall, uh, design, um, uh, if, if obviously, um, the drawings are accurate, the, the graphics are accurate, uh, yes, I think it's effective use of this site. And I say, to me, I think, uh, far way away to the actual uplifting numbers of, uh, affordable housing. Uh, and actually, um, far better use of this town, which actually from the original, uh, slide that the officials have put up show how poorly used this town was originally.
Can I start?
Just to return to this question, what we're talking about, Milton Road Primary School is a very recent ten years old. So we're, we're talking about the contemporary building. It has a dual access and the rear access, and it is a rear access, is closed once the children are in school and it's not opened again till they come out to go, to go home. So, um, I don't think the points of cancer are making up particularly germane to this question. It's perfectly possible to have two accesses which are completely safe and secure. And I think the advantages were creating outweighs the disadvantages to have that easy access rather than having to go around the house or the square, particularly along a very busy main road.
Could I ask a question? If the school doesn't want the access, is that in planning terms, we could have it on the better? Can we?
Well, in, in response to that, I think, I think we could, but we'd, we would need to take into account the likelihood of, of that being used. Um, and whether it's reasonable to, to require that.
I thought I might, I thought I'd get it, but as a, for a school governor experience, yes, this, this design could have included a pathway to the rear of the school. If the school decided they don't wish to actually entertain use of a rear access onto the school premises, then that's up to them. You can't do anything about that.
Can I start?
I appreciate the views of Councilor Smart, certainly. Uh, but I have a different question. Um, on the condition twenty-four, on page hundred and fifty-five, yes, should, should this application be approved? You said, uh, there is a problem of measures to do, much prefer the best on the side during construction and demolition. Can you, can the officer elaborate? What kind of measures did you do? Because we're currently facing the residents complaining, moping around, their cavity dusting filled from the neighbours, as well as in master room. So I'm not questioning what are the kind of rules you could be playing to stop. And then the contractors are not really very willing to cooperate with the neighbours. They're not interested.
Brilliant, Chair. The sort of measures would be something like making sure there's dampened downs, there's somebody in the house, piping the weather, making sure the dust stays on the site, um, something like, um, wheel washing to make sure that the nightingale debris isn't taken up onto the road. Making sure that, um, when demolition is taking place, that the vehicles that are removing anything from the site help covers over them. So those sort of practical measures, but it'd be down to the contractor to bring that information forward at later stage.
And if they don't, you say if you're not listening to, if they don't follow these, do you have a power to say, look, you should follow these rules?
Uh, yes, we would do because as part of, of a bit of approval for planning conditions, if they then didn't, um, deal with that planning condition requirements, then we'd have enforcement laws that we can make. Before we did that, we'd probably send somebody like me, you know, and the contracted staff on the site to have other work. But I wouldn't anticipate there being an issue, they're in mind with the development side.
Can I start?
So I just want to go back to the parting. I think we've all been school governors one time or another. If at this point we take out that part, it can never be put back in or unlikely to be able to be put back in, should the school decide that traffic is more dangerous to children than, uh, somebody coming in through the rear entrance when they don't want. Uh, and the present, the balance of opinion, obviously, in the school at the moment, is that that danger is greater than the traffic. I could see, I can easily foresee, of course, that balance of, um, of risk being weighted differently in the future. Therefore, I think we ought to have the path there, even if it is not going to be used at the moment. Because as I said, um, the balance of risk for children between strangers and traffic is not quite as straightforward as sometimes the headlines might suggest.
I'll just go there. How about the traffic government, that state of the children playing in that?
It, we're talking about the traffic going there and I, I agree that, um, parents taking children to school, particularly if it's over a short distance, is a distinct hazard for school children. But one of the factors that prevents that or goes against that is providing safe routes for walking and cycling which are short. And this is exactly what we're talking about. Um, the, the constant pressure of the, of the school and particularly other parents, the PTA etcetera, on parents being responsible if they must take their children to school and actually considering whether they really must, is really the only factor that can be dealt with there. But it is all part of the risk, which I accept that the school has to balance out. The risk from traffic, including parents bringing their children to school, but also the risk of the traffic on the main road as against the, the risk of undesirables getting into the school, which I would suggest is actually much less. But it is a balance that the parents, that the school has to, but we take the path out, it's not a judgment that they can make. We've taken their choice away from them. I suggest it's undesirable.
Well, in response now, I'd just say that the, the overall recommendation on this is very much a, a balanced one. Um, if, you know, we have, um, received evidence from the applicant agent that, um, the school would not wish this route to be used. It's overgrown, it hasn't been used for some time. So if we were to insist on this being provided or space being set aside to provide this in the future, um, that would mean a number of dwellings would have to be reduced to accommodate it, which would, according to the viability information, see affect the viability of the, of the scheme and result in the need to, um, possibly provide some market housing in order to improve the, the cost subsidy. So really taking a very sort of balanced view, um, and the need to, to secure additional affordable housing and the fact that this proposal is recently looking to make much better use of the site than exists at present. Um, the recommendation is to approve without that link being provided.
Can I start?
In response to that, I can't believe that a two and a half meter path is going to, um, so impair the viability of this scheme. It just seems to be completely out, out of proportion. Um, I think a, any designer could, um, create that necessary space without losing, um, the viability of the property. Um, the reason that the path is overgrown, one needs to know the history of that school. There was a previous school on that side which closed down some years ago. And the site was vacant for, I think, these two years and then, then they decided to reopen it because of growing plant. It's not surprising the path is so overgrown. Um, the The school had ceased to exist and nobody was going that way anyway. So I think we'll have to be very careful to keep to the facts and not to interpret as we simply are doing. It is a very strong case for making short cycling and walking paths which are far from motorised vehicles for primary school children particularly. And I think it's something that we should just cast aside. So for the very least, as Counselor Smart says, leave the possibility open to the future. And ask the governors and head teacher of Chesterton Primary School to go to Milton Road and talk to their opposite numbers there and see how it can work perfectly well, perfectly safely. It's not, it should not be an issue.
I think they had already told, but Counselor Blenner, I think?
Yeah, I just echo Counselor Smart's point, which clearly, if you believe that to be the case then you have to refuse the scheme because this scheme essentially designed to do this. We understand that and we understand the reason why.
On that note then, I think with Counselor...
Chair, I asked three questions. None of them has been answered. I would enjoy courtesy of an answer to my question.
I think Counselor Blenner, one?
He answered one about the court. Yes, I'm satisfied on that one. Can I know what is the status of the SPD and what account it took of the housing needs of those on the register? And can I please ask also how many of the dwellings presently are occupied and unoccupied?
The affordable housing SPD dates from 2008 and is intended as sort of advice and advisory background to the relevant planning policy. I haven't assessed this against the Housing Needs Register. The application has made it clear that these dwellings are intended to serve the needs of existing occupiers that are looking to be repoused in the new dwellings and also those on the Register of Hundred Houses Housing Association. So I am satisfied that there is a need for the dwellings that are posed within this application, even though mix is in strict accordance with the SPD. My understanding, but I can't say with any certainty, but my understanding is that the housing on the site is presently occupied, but I couldn't say if any are vacant. And then the third question, I think on the mixture of cyclists and pedestrians going to and from the school, I think we've sort of talked about further since the initial question.
Thank you. I think so.
Okay, so just to clarify that the recommendation is one of the principles subject to section 106 being firstly being completed and the conditions set out in the report. The amendment sheet does include an additional condition which is being recommended by the tree officer, which is to acquire an agricultural method state in tree protection plan, which will show how the trees that are being retained will be protected during the course of development. So the amendment sheet notes that down as an additional condition 26. In my summary going on this morning, I also mentioned two, like, additional conditions. Firstly, the nature conservation officer has indicated that an ecological condition will be required and I'm currently waiting for the detailed wording of that to be provided. And do also need to liaise with the waste team regarding the tracking diagram that was provided yesterday by the agent. So I'm with the delegated authority to apply any conditions that may be required by the waste team in response to that.
Thank you. All that thorough information. Please, could I go to the vote then? The recommendations for approval, which can be found on page 148. All those in favour, please show it.
Six, Chair.
Those against? Thank you very much. That completes the session.